A meeting to order and so. I'm calling, good evening, everyone.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'm calling the Temple City Regular City Council Meeting to Order for May 18, 2021. Pursuant to the executive order issued by the Governor Newsom. On March 17, 2020, cities allowed to host city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to the meeting telephonically, please call 1-872-240-3212. Access code 574-737-373 or through the city's live webcast on YouTube. Connect with TC. Madam Clerk, please make, please roll call.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Viscara.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sternquist.
Here.
Mayor Yu.
Here.
For those calling in, your audio will be unmuted during public comment and when public comments open during agenda item discussion. You can also email your request to speak to city clerk@templecity.us right now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Tonight, we have Pastor Jim Walden of First Baptist Church of Temple City located at 1619 Baldwin Avenue. He will provide invocation. Pastor Walden?
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, it's so good to see all your smiling faces. So let's pray, okay? Father, what a great night it is. And once again, I want to bring Temple City before you and thank you for this wonderful city, the state of California, the United States of America. Lord God, how we look to you for wisdom. I thank you that you are the one that you claim to put people into leadership positions. And so I raise up the city council, all the folks here that help lead, protect, and serve this wonderful city. And Father, would you pour out your blessing? We ask for your blessing on America. We thank you that the COVID situation is improving and folks are able to get out more. And we ask for the businesses and the families that they would be touched by your hand, be a powerful rest of the spring and summer. And so grant this team, as they work through so many issues, the wisdom that comes from heaven. And we will thank you for what you're gonna do. I'm so grateful for them. In Jesus' powerful name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Pastor Walden. Thank you. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Many begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. Would you stand?
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Keep repeating it. Next item is ceremonial matters. Presentation, there is none. And then now it's public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Proceed, your distress, city council is highlighted on the first page of the agenda. For those calling in, your audio will now be unmuted. They say your name, so that we can add you to speakers list. Provide callers from speaking over each other will call your name to speak. You can also email your request to speak to city clerk@templecity.us right now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers?
Mayor Yu, we have one caller on the line and I have two email public comments.
Okay. Caller, could you please say your name?
Hello?
Hello. Welcome. Good evening.
Oh, good evening. It's talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Feng Lan Liu. First, I want to thank relations to our Mayor Yu and thank you for all the service. And also, thanks, many, many thanks to all our council members. I currently have two things I want to make public comments. One thing is we, we send emails to all five members, council members. I think last week, like more than 20 residents. We want our council members to consider to form a vote of non-confidence in LA County District Attorney George Gaskin because he's not good for our society. He released so many criminals. That's why so many crimes in our society. So that's first thing, my, you know, my suggestion. But since our city vote no confidence to LA District Attorney. And another question I have is recently on my store and also my couple of my neighbors. They are talking about our water, another word, trash. They, 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 I know we did the mail from the city says, I think by July, our trash is going to change the service from twice to once. And also, hmm. Today, actually, two of my neighbors, they came to my house this afternoon. They, they, they did, one of them did some research. They told me our trash is the most expensive one compared with San Gabriel, Longtree Park, and Hacienda Heights. They want to know why our same company, why our city got a better deal compared with other cities. That's, that's my two questions. Thank you again. I also believe, you know, compare with other cities, the council members. I think we, our Temple City has the best. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Liu. Appreciate your comments tonight. Do we have any other callers? I don't see any other callers on the list. Madam Clerk, are there any callers? I don't see any on my screen.
Mayor, there are no other callers, but I do have two email public comments.
And Madam Clerk, could you please read them?
Thank you, sir. The first one is from Lucy Liu. Good evening, Mayor Yu and fellow city council members. I'd like to ask you to consider a vote of no confidence in DA George Gaskin. As of April 29, six other city, Los Angeles County cities have already voted no confidence in him. These are Santa Clarita, Beverly Hills, Pico Rivera, Lancaster, Lujair, and La Mirada. As a Temple City resident and active member of the Neighborhood Watch, I strongly feel that the policy and non-persecution directives put in place by this district attorney threatens the safety of those who live in Los Angeles County. We have already been suffering the consequences of AB 109 and Prop 47 since the law. With Prop 57 going into effect on May 1st, we're now facing the possible release of tens of thousands of violent criminals from state prison. Having a DA like George Gaskin does not provide the line of defense residents need when victimized by these or any other criminals. Temple City has been in the top 50 of safest, safest, safe, wise list of California's safest cities in recent years, even jumping seven spots and reaching number 23 this year. It is up to city council to continue taking the necessary steps to ensure that we stay safe and up high up on the list. Thank you. The second comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Liu. All right. Continue, please.
The second email comment comes from NGPAA@hotmail.com. Dear Temple City Council, I'm submitting this email on behalf of my neighbors and I. We'd like to get detailed insights for the new Athens trash contract. Based on the current communication from the city and Athens, it appears that the cost has increased more than 100% starting January 2021. The calculation is based on the assumption that there are eight trash collections per month as compared to the new four trash collection per month. Based on the old monthly rate of $35.90 with eight trash collections, it costs about $4.48 per trash collection. The new monthly rate of $37.21 with only four trash collections, the cost increased from $4.48 to $9.30 per trash collection amounts to more than 100% increase. Furthermore, it appears that our neighboring cities with similar services changes provided by Athens have much lower cost. For example, Roland Heights' new monthly rate is $23.39 and they're even getting larger 96-gallon containers as compared to the 64-gallon containers for Temple City. We're paying more than 50% in this case. And he's attached the rate notice from Athens for Roland Heights reference. The question and concerns are quite obvious. What are the justifications for this new contract that appears to be quite unreasonable? We rely on your judgment to provide what is best for the city. Your response would be appreciated. Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you for that comment. So I think that concludes our public comments. We'll close public comments. The next item is consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. If members of the city council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters, listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests on consent items?
No, Mayor.
Do we have any callers? Because I, again, I don't see any other callers on the list.
No, sir. There are no other callers.
Okay. So the consent calendar is in front of the city council. Do we have a motion?
Mayor Yu, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moving second, Madam Clerk, roll call, both, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Yu.
Yes. So the consent calendar items have, have been approved. Next item is public hearing. We have one item, resolution number 21-5524, ordering the levy of citywide lighting and maintenance district assessment for fiscal year 2122. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Yu and members of the council. Before you tonight is the annual levy resolution that we have to present to the county in order to receive funding from both the ad valorem and the assessment district. As you'll remember, almost a year and a half ago, Senator Rubio introduced statewide legislation providing that the use of funds for both the levy assessment and the ad valorem could be used for a single purpose under the 1972 Act. So this is the, no, no increase in rates, no adjustments of any kind for, for any payer into the assessment district. So we ask your approval. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the city council, starting with Councilmember Chavez?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Min.
No questions.
Councilmember Viscara.
No questions.
Mayor Protem Sternquist.
No questions. Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions for staff either. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any emails or phone calls?
Mayor Yu, there are no email comments and we will now mute the one caller.
Okay.
Ms. Liu, did you want to?
Caller, if you want to speak, identify yourself, please. Give us your name.
Mayor Yu, we have the same caller on the line. We're not sure if she wants to make a comment on this item.
Oh, I, sorry. I don't want my comments. I said what happened. I want to say, I just want to, you know, keep listening to our council members' speeches. Sorry for that.
Okay, you're welcome. Yeah. So I will close public comments. Close public hearing and find any final questions from council. Councilmember Chavez.
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Min.
I have none. Thank you.
Councilmember Viscara.
I don't either.
Mayor Protem Sternquist. Mayor Protem Sternquist, sorry, you are.
No, thank you.
Okay, I, I don't have any questions or comments too. This is something largely, pretty much a procedural approval that we have to do. So I'm ready for motion.
Mayor Yu, I'll move that we adopt resolution number 21-5524, ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
Do I have a second? Okay, moving second, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chavez.
Yes.
Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist.
Yes.
Mayor Yu.
Yes. Thank you. So the resolution carried. Our next item is unfinished business. There is one item before us, introduction, the first reading of ordinance number 21-1055 and made in Article 9-1T, special uses of the zoning code relating to new grocery stores. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Yu and members of the council. I will provide an introduction for tonight's item and then the community development director, Mr. Remers, will go through his PowerPoint presentation for you tonight. As we discussed several weeks ago with numerous items related to both moratoriums and on the public spaces and other issues, one of the remaining items to address was the issue of grocery stores. And in particular, the by right ability for cities to be, excuse me, for grocery stores by right and through that entitlement to be instituted citywide. By right does give the ability of a city to essentially make a simpler approval process for any type of activity, in this case grocery stores. If it is by right, it is a simpler process in terms of the approval process. Part of the idea of this ordinance tonight was to try to attempt a couple things and I'll, I'll break it down into two areas where it's kind of discretionary and one area that's not so discretionary and has some nuances that Mr. Remers will go over. One of the things we tried to do, just so that it was clear, which wasn't necessarily clear in the code, is a definition of what a grocery store is. A general definition, so that there is somewhat of a concern that's been expressed related to a level of quality in terms of grocery stores and what we're looking for. Four areas that were related to those conditions and these first three areas are really discretionary on the council's part. If the council feels as though some of these areas are too restrictive or you want changed, or even you don't want to see it all, that is your decision as a council to do that. One of, one of them is the minimum and, minimum and maximum floor area ratio. So we, the thought process from staff and, and from us was that we looked at what, a general understanding and I would say a general understanding of like sample grocery stores, like 99-cent ranch market, a Vons, an H Mart, a Ralph's. What do those general characteristics look like? So we looked at things like minimum maximums for fresh groceries, alcohol sales, and accessory uses. Also defined a little bit more are what, what would constitute kiosks? What kind of standards would they have in terms of construction, appearance, those kind of things? The other one, the other item of discussion was outdoor sales. What, what could be on the outside? Do you just put just general crates? Or do you create an atmosphere of, you know, of, of, that's inviting and can create an atmosphere that's a destination in terms of the grocery store itself? The area that's a little more nuanced and does not have as much discretion and Mr. Remers will go into it tonight, where if the council wishes to change some things or not comfortable with some of the conditions, is the recycling issue. And Mr. Remers will go through it tonight. And the indoor and outdoor requirements that this ordinance would require for by right abilities as citywide to have a grocery store, that can be played with a bit. But what can't be played with is the state requirements related to the accessibility of recycle centers within a certain radius of an established grocery store. That's going to be one of the challenges. So again, our thought process, and again, I talked about where there's, the council can provide, you know, the council's not comfortable with some of the standards or in the discretionary areas of, you know, the floor area ratio, outdoor sales, kiosks. And the other area where there's a little less discretion is on the recycling side. So with that, I will turn it over to our community development director, if that's okay, Mayor Yu.
Yeah, please. Mr. Remer, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So with that, I'll go ahead and dive into the presentation. So the first area related to floor area under the previous ordinance was about general merchandise. And under the previous ordinance that you received back in April, there was a maximum amount of floor area that could be set aside for general merchandise. Based on the discussion from that meeting, the proposed ordinance that's before you tonight has removed that from the ordinance. However, to deal with the question about a Target store or Walmart store that has both a combination of general merchandise and groceries, we thought it would be helpful within the definition of a grocery store to note that the general merchandise stores would not be considered a grocery store. But they, because they're retailers over 10,000 square feet, they would apply for a CUP.
I have a quick question. If it's less than 10,000 square feet, then they don't have to apply for a CUP?
That's correct. Under the code, a general retail does not require a CUP if it's under 10,000 square feet.
That's already included.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The second one related to floor area is a requirement regarding fresh food. And under the proposed requirement for grocery stores was that at least 20% of the floor area needed to be set aside for fresh food. The objective here is related to a general plan objective, which is about ensuring that there is a source for healthy food and fresh food. And so we looked at 99 Ranch Market, we looked at a Vons and an H Mart to get a sense for what was the appropriate percentage of floor area for which they typically provide fresh food, and we landed at 20%. This would incentivize your typical grocers. Grocery stores that meet this requirement would not require a CUP. But if there was a grocer that's over 10,000 square feet that didn't have at least 20% of the floor area for fresh food, they could still come in. They would need a conditional use permit. So that might look something like a 99-cent store. Their new models are larger than 10,000 square feet. Their fresh food section could be less than 20%, so those would require a CUP.
Mr. Remer, in your research, what, what does 99 Ranch, H Mart, what range of floor area for fresh food that do they fall under?
The way we define fresh food includes both the produce. It includes even dry goods like breads and bakery items. It includes dairy products, all sorts of those. So basically, only the canned goods or the boxed goods wouldn't fall under that. Those stores sell well above that requirement of 20%. They're selling 40% probably of fresh food because the whole exterior of the building is typically lined with some fresh food.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with H Mart. Where, where are those located?
There's an H Mart on Huntington Drive, just east of Michelinda. On the north side of the street, the old Ralph's Market.
On Huntington, east or west of Michelinda, you said?
It's east of Michelinda.
And it's on the north, they're on the northwest corner of there.
And it's called H Mart?
Yeah, it was the old Ralph's. It's a Korean restaurant. I mean, Korean store.
It's called the Ralph's.
Yeah, I go by there every day on the way to work. I didn't even know what it was called. All right, now I know.
They have great meat.
Take your word for it.
The third area related to floor area was in relation to alcohol sales. And here, this was a maximum, a maximum amount of floor area that could be set aside for alcohol sales. After doing some more research on grocery store sales, we have not included Trader Joe's in the mix. So after looking at Trader Joe's, we've, we've modified our recommendation to allow up to 50% of the floor area for alcohol sales. The reason why we're recommending to have a maximum limit on alcohol sales is to assist staff in the future with potential liquor stores that might try to come in and try to come in as a grocery store. So some liquor stores provide grocery items, even some provide cheeses and crackers and those sorts of items. It might try to come in as a grocery store. So we thought it would be beneficial to have a maximum amount of alcohol sales.
Mr. Remer, if they don't come in as a grocery store, what would they be classified? They have more than 15%, what would they fall under? Just retail store?
Let me double check the code, what it would require. But I believe off-site sales of alcohol requires a conditional use permit for general retail. But I'd have to double check.
Okay, thank you.
The last section related to floor area is related to accessory uses. So the idea here is that some grocery stores have accessory uses, such as a bank inside, a coffee stand, a juice bar, or even some, some smaller fast food or to-go type restaurants. We thought it would be helpful when looking at new grocery stores to have a maximum amount of space that could be set aside for these types of accessory uses to help distinguish a grocery store from a public food market or even from another type of use. So after looking at some other examples, really after looking at the H Mart model, which does have a small food court, we're recommending to reduce the maximum amount of accessory uses from 15 down to 10%. What we found was that with Ralph's and Vons, those tend to have a very small footprint for accessory uses around, in some cases, only 2% or 3%. But the H Mart store really has a food market. And so we looked at some of those floor plans and found that that was only 10% of the floor area. So that's, those were the regulations regarding floor area. This next section is regarding indoor recycling. So when we did our presentation back last month, there were a number of questions about the state's requirements for indoor recycling and also the idea of recycling, indoor recycling. So the state has a law that requires one recycling facility within a half mile of a grocery store. And I, I say that's the general rule, the state law. The state law in regards to this is more than 10 or 15 pages long. It's very nuanced. But the general idea is that where people purchase beverage containers that have a California redemption value, they want to have a recycling facility where those containers can be redeemed within what's called a convenience zone. A convenience zone is, in most cases, a half mile radius. Right now, the city has two convenience zones. One is centered around the Ralph's Market on Las Tunas. And the other is, the convenience zone is at the numero uno on Rosemead Boulevard near Longdon. Over the last few years, we had had some complaints about the existing recycling center, most specifically in front of Ralph's. And so in a desire to limit that unsightliness and eliminate some of those complaints that we've been receiving, we were proposing the notion of having an indoor recycling center. So we scoured the nation to find some examples for you of what that would look like and how they tend to function. The closest example that we could find, not that it is the only example, but where they do have a lot of these facilities is in Oregon, where there's a company called Bottle Drop, where they typically rent out a tenant space and they have what are called reverse vending machines. And a reverse vending machine is the machine that you put the bottle or can into. It keeps track of how many you've inserted. And at the end of the transaction, it credits you an amount of money. So this is what an indoor recycling facility could look like. Basically, like a small tenant space within a grocery store with a line of reverse vending machines. There are a number of other companies that make these reverse vending machines and run operations in other locations throughout the country. But basically, they look like an electronic kiosk where the person puts in the can or the bottle. And at the end of the transaction, they get a receipt. In some cases, the receipt is taken to the cashier and that's transacted for money. Or it's credited on like a sort of a debit card that's registered with the company. So the way we imagine this functioning is when someone enters the grocery store, to the left or to the right would be either a separate tenant space or a series of reverse vending machines that are usable by the public. And then past that, then the remainder of the grocery store, the for-sales area of the grocery store would be located. Another question that came up at our meeting in April was about kiosks.
I'm sorry, Mayor Yu, may I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
So are there any California examples of such an operation? Or is it just, Oregon was the only one that we were able to find?
That's the, that was the closest location I could find. I thought there might be some up and writing, given the implement whether they're there and the state's requirements, but I didn't find any.
And I'm not sure, I had spoken with our city manager earlier today on this issue. I'm not sure if he touched base with you. But my question was, does this ordinance require the grocery market to put a recycling center inside their location? Or to me, the way I read the staff report, it's just California law generally requires a recycling center within a half mile radius of when a new grocery goes in. But it's not clear as to who is supposed to do that? The store or the city or who?
Yes. So if the facility would not require a recycling center because it's exempt or because it's, there's already a recycling facility within the convenience zone, then the grocery store would not be required to have a recycling facility. But if the grocery store was required to have a recycling facility, then the ordinance would require it to be indoors.
Hey, I'm not really sure that completely answers my question. Maybe taking an example. Let's say a grocery, let's say a grocery store goes in in the Kmart spot. Are they going to be required to have an indoor recycling center under this proposed ordinance?
If, if by placing a grocery store at the Kmart site, it creates a convenience zone, then it is required to have a recycling facility. And the recycling facility, according to this ordinance, would be required to be indoors.
Okay, anybody tell me if that will create a convenience zone? We say if it does. I would imagine we would know now whether it does or doesn't.
Well, generally, it would by state law. But the Super A Foods, for instance, is exempt from having a recycling center. I don't know why it's exempt. There are some exemptions but within state law. Some of those exemptions are based on the amount of sales of the facility, how long the facility has been around. There's a number of exemptions that are provided for.
Greg, can you share some light on this subject from a legal standpoint?
Sure.
I'm struggling with understanding the legality of what we're actually asking grocers to do or not do. I know that we have, you've mentioned, we have the two recycling centers. One currently at Ralph's on Las Tunas and one up on Rosemead. Is that, are those places within a half mile of the location at the Kmart center?
I believe, sir, that they're both outside the half mile. And I think the sort of threshold issue that we have to remember with all of these performance metrics is that if a store does not want to comply with the performance metrics, they can still be a grocery store and come in. They would just need to go through a conditional use permit process rather than be allowed by right. So what Mr. Reimers is suggesting is that to avoid the, sometimes, public complaints about noise and the appearance of outdoor recycling, that if a grocery store wants to come in and come in by right, that they would find a way to internalize their recycling operation. Again, if indeed one is needed. I do not know, the state does not make it easy to know why the Super A is exempt. It is, and I'm looking right now at their analysis of it. It's the zone in which it's located is called exempt. And I honestly cannot tell you why because they don't tell us why. Other two, as you know, both have outdoor recycling areas.
Well, I would imagine that if Super A is exempt, a place two doors down from them will also be exempt unless, I mean, again, I don't know what the exemption is, but.
That's very likely, sir. And so if it's the will of the council, and I'm sure Mr. Reimers would agree, proposed subsection G could say, you could say recycling facilities, including reverse vending machines must be indoors if such facilities are required by state law. And then we can put it on them to show us whether they're required or exempt. I can also tell you that if a recycling, if there is not a recycling center in a convenience zone, then each entity that sells beverage containers has to establish a recycling center or else pay the state department in charge of this a $100 per day fine or else just accept empty beverage containers and do with them what they will. So they're under some pressure from the state as well. And certainly, they would know whether they'd be, if they are a high-quality grocer, as the council would like to see come into Temple City, they're going to know whether they're in a zone that needs a recycling center or not. And then they can work with staff as to the best way to cite that.
Greg?
Yes, Mayor.
Before I go on, is there a raised hand thing that we can like let the mayor know? We'd like to talk so we're not interrupting him? I don't see one on our.
No, there is not, Mayor. I mean, Councilmember Sternquist, there's not on this on-go-to meeting.
Oh, okay. So Mayor, I'm sorry if, we just need to jump in then because we don't have a system to let you know we want to talk. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
You could do the old-fashioned way and raise your hand.
Oh, that's a good idea. Okay.
I can see your hand.
Okay. I, I'm a little confused as to why we're discussing this if we don't know whether or not there is an exemption. I mean, I think we should know that before we, because if there's, if there's an exemption, I don't think I want one indoors or outdoors. And then I have a question, Greg. Is, do you know if the, or for Scott, actually, do we know if the bays there for auto repair are going to stay? Or is that going to go away?
Let me answer the first question first, and then I can turn it over to Scott.
Okay.
This ordinance would apply citywide. And so we can't really know what the department's going to do at different spots in the city.
Got it.
As I said earlier, they don't give us the reason why the zone around Super A is exempt. And since we don't know the reason, it's hard for us to analyze where other exemptions might apply. So that's why, you know, as I said, we can modify subsection G a little bit, perhaps make it contingent on the state requiring a recycling center. But that's why we can't really deal in specifics. Scott, as to that site, do you know?
No, we haven't seen any plans or applications for the reuse of the Kmart at this point.
Okay, because I'm wondering if, if that, those bays stay there and we, and they're not exempt or we need to have, they need to have a recycling center, couldn't we not ask them to put it into one of those bays there? I mean, because it, it's outside, but it, the service would be inside of the grocery store.
Yeah, I think it could be, it could be possible to put it in one of those bays.
Because then it's not unsightly outside. And actually, to me, it looks like a laundromat inside the store in the pictures that we've seen. But if we could ask them if they have to do one to put it inside of one of those bays, I think it might be a better option.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. So going back to the kiosk item, back in April, there was a question about this proposed rule, which was that certain items needed to be located indoors. And that included a kiosk, an unattended collection box, a vending machine, and an online retail locker, that those needed to be inside the grocery store. The question at that time was, what is a kiosk? Because a kiosk could be understood in a number of different ways. So to help provide some clarity on that, we added the word electronic before kiosk so that it now reads that electronic kiosks need to be located indoors. And so on this slide here, we've provided you an example of what these online retail lockers look like, what an unattended collection box, which looks like. This is where people drop off used items and clothing. But a vending machine, you know what those look like? And then what is thought of as an electronic kiosk?
Mayor Yu, I have a quick question. My understanding on these kiosks that where people bring clothing, that there's nothing electronic about those at all. You simply pull down a, you got an arm and you throw the clothes in there and it drops them in. Is that, that still applied to? Because it looks like in your picture here, you have a collection box, a yellow one that's there. I'm assuming that's, maybe that, or maybe that's an Amazon, maybe that's an Amazon pickup thing.
Yeah, it says order and pick up here.
Yeah. Oh, so would the, so the collection boxes for clothing, what's, how would that be classified as? And don't we have a, don't we have a separate ordinance for that? I remember we had an issue in that a few years ago where some of these key, some of these collection boxes were not being well-attended. And I thought we had cleaned up the law on that particular area. Maybe not.
So the way the ordinance reads is as a list. So there's electronic kiosks, unattended collection boxes, vending machines, and online locker, online retail lockers, all of those need to be located indoors. We did adopt a set of rules.
He's breaking up, Vince. I'm sorry, Vince, Mayor. He was breaking up, I couldn't hear him. Now I can't hear you.
Can you hear me okay? Am I coming through all right?
Let me turn off my mic and.
Mr. Reimers, try turning your mic off and then back on again.
I'm using a different microphone now. I can also switch networks as well if that helps.
I can hear you now.
A lot clearer now. Okay, good. So the way the ordinance reads is that it reads as a list. So all of these things need to be located indoors if they're associated with a grocery store. If it's associated with a grocery store, these electronic kiosks, the unattended collection boxes, the vending machines, and the online retail lockers, all of these need to be located indoors when they're associated with grocery stores. We can fall back on, when it comes to unattended collection boxes, we can fall back on the general ordinance that does allow them to be located outside under certain circumstances.
Do you recognize me, Vince? Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I think we're having trouble with Mayor Yu.
Okay. Who typically owns?
Sorry, my area, yes, I could see you as a member of the store.
Who typically owns these, these collection boxes? Is that a private enterprise?
Yes, they're typically owned by a private group. Sometimes they're associated with a nonprofit organization. Sometimes they're for-profit. The for-profit people tend to take the items and recycle them and turn them into other products. Some of the nonprofits tend to try and resell better items at thrift stores and such. Thank you. Another section of the ordinance.
Mayor Yu, you're muted, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, okay. Let's say some of the folks who provide collection boxes to non-grocery stores, what does our current ordinance say? They don't have to abide by this indoor requirement then.
That's correct. Under the existing ordinance, they do not need to be indoors. They can be outdoors. And then there's certain setback requirements from things like driveways, residential locations, they're not allowed to be placed in the landscaping of a parking lot. They can't take up required parking space for the use. There's a number of requirements for them.
All right, thank you. Greg, continue.
So another section that the council spoke about at the last meeting in April was about outdoor sales. In response to some of the council conversation, we've removed the limitation on the types of items being sold outside. And now the ordinance only addresses how those items are displayed. And so what the ordinance talks about is using hy-. Um, and so what the ordinance talks about is using high-quality materials such as finished wood to display items. So on the right side of the slide, you can see that some of the display uses some high-quality uh finished wood to display pumpkins and seasonal flowers and such. And then the ordinance does not allow things um for outdoor sales to be provided in on pallets, cardboard boxes, and plastic crates.
So, Mr. Remers, so under well, in in your four examples here, the one to the two to the right would be acceptable. Uh, but whereas the two to the left, what not?
That's correct.
Alright, thank you.
And so those are the changes that staff is proposing based on the comments from council um back in April. Um if you have more questions, I'm still around. Um, otherwise, our recommendation is to introduce this ordinance for first reading, wait for the reading and schedule the second reading of ordinance um twenty-one ten fifty-five for June first. Uh, just a note, um, in the uh, I think we had previously distributed a copy of this PowerPoint where we had the wrong second reading date, but this is the this would be the appropriate second reading day, June first.
Alright, thank you. Um, and this time let's, oh, uh, Councilmember Viscar.
I just happened to think, looking at that display you just showed, um if our farmer's market is not i- is in violation of whatever we do now, how are we going to handle that? Because I think they might
So these these rules uh focus more on grocery stores rather than the farmer's market concept.
So it wouldn't apply?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, the council has asked a bunch of questions, but I still want to go around the the council to see if there are any further questions. I'll start with Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you. Uh, I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Obviously, these new rules apply only to new builds, not to existing grocery stores. And I'm sure that's correct. So, for example, uh, we can't force Ralphs to move their reclamation inside. And actually, I if I'm correct, and I know it's getting a little off the subject, and Mayor Yu, I apologize. The the reclamation or the reclamation at Ralphs isn't run by Ralphs. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a separate company.
Yeah, I I think maybe uh, and I again, last last comment on this, maybe given the discussion tonight, maybe we need to take a look at how those are run and what what rules and regulations that we have there. Because uh, you know, it it to me, it's like when you're getting a complaint about something and those complaints, obviously, uh, that's something that the council needs to look at and from a larger picture. Um Other than that, that's those are the only questions I have now, Vince. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Mint, questions?
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Yu. Um, my my first question is um regarding the recycling center, does the state have any requirements that a recycling center must be a certain size or must have certain facilities or machinery to qualify as a recycling center? And and I what I'm trying to get at is is would that then dictate, you know, if a new market came in and was compelled to put one indoors, how much space would that really take up out of that entire area? Just trying to get a sense of that.
Um, from from my review of the state code, um, there the law addresses, for instance, the size of the signs, the uh, there are some minimum hours of operations. They're allowed to use either just a um a weighing scheme versus an actual scanning of barcode scheme. They're allowed to use reverse vending machines or um wholesale collection. Um, but there's um nothing from what I've read in regards to a certain size requirement.
I apologize, Councilman. It it essentially has to be sufficient to um take back in the volume of of uh recyclables that are being sold. Um, a- and they understand, the state understands that a lot of people will put their recyclables uh out for Athens to pick up, but they they have to be able to handle the volume that that would be sold. Uh, oftentimes, that can be done with a much smaller operation than what you see in the outdoor operations. Uh, and those operations are large in order to attract attention and to attract uh more people to come come use the operation. So um, Mr. Remers is right, there's not any specific requirement. But if you had a situation where people were just dumping bags uh next to a recycling uh facility, uh, the state would eventually find it out of compliance.
Okay, because I I guess I'm just trying to imagine, you know, based on the pictures that uh Director Remers had provided from this in Oregon and other places. I mean, would it be would it be feasible for a a new market to just have a very small area that has like a recycling kiosk on against the wall, you know, where people it's like a very small footprint and, you know, I I think the general concern we as council get regarding the complaint Ralphs is because of the size that it takes up and the kind of like like you mentioned, Mr. Murphy, the the bags that are just kind of dumped there and it's it's not organized. It's it's it looks like people are just dumping garbage out in a very publicly viewable area. Um, but if there's a way that we can regulate that in an indoor setting where it's it's not very impactful to the overall, I guess, beyond so whatever market is is going to be present, um, to me, that seems like a possible common ground, but I just don't know what power we have in in our regulatory capacity to really dictate that and would that clash with state guidelines? So I I'm I'm just thinking out loud to try to reconcile some of my council colleagues concerned recycling center. So, actually, that was probably more of a comment than a question. Anyway, my I I do have a second question. Uh, regarding kiosks, are we allowed to disallow kiosks inside or is it something preventing us from saying you cannot just outright ban ban the use?
I don't know of any legal limitation on you in that regard, uh given that most of the the grocery stores I I know in in my neighborhood have at the very least a California lottery kiosk inside. It it there may be some operational constraints. Um, and you may wind up forcing the types of businesses that you want to have uh to go through the CUP process rather than um the by right process. But no, I I don't know of any legal limitation on that. Scott, do you know of any planning limitation?
No, I can't think of any.
Okay, so I I guess what I'm trying to get at is similar to the recycling complaints that we get. We get complaints about outdoor kiosks or collection centers that are kind of left in disrepair. It's not managed. It's 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 a it looks like a visual blight in an area. While moving it indoors, I can understand that perhaps there's a bit more control over what it's going to be. I like when the stores close, obviously, people can't um, but at the same time, if you just outright say, we're not going to allow you to have a collection kiosk, period. So that problem essentially is comes not exist. But again, I I'm asking that question because I don't want us to get into some sort of ego, you know, problem by saying, oh, well, you you're allowed to use that by right. You as a city can't take so that's that's just something I I would bring forth for consideration. That that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmembers, Viscar, you have any more questions?
Yeah, well, based on what William was asking, are are doesn't Ralphs control that that uh recycle center there on their property? I I thought they leased it to them. No?
Yes, I I you typically what happens is the um the recycling center leases from the property owner. I'm I'm just not sure if Ralphs own the property or if there's another property owner involved. Um, but there's typically a it's a separate business from the grocery store, but there's usually some lease agreement between the recycling facility and the property owner.
Back when dinosaurs walked the earth, we we um talked about about that, and I thought I remembered that Ralphs had control over that place. He was finding out we could hold their feet to the fire at least to keep it clean. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mayor Tim Sternquist, any further questions?
Um, sorry, haven't had lunch, so I was taking a bite of dinner. Um, I think that the outside area there where the bays are is a great alternative. And I would try and see what we could do to get it there because it even has its own area to park that's separate from where people who were just wanted to do their grocery shopping would park. People could park on the side there facing Las Tunas and then enter one of those bays and it's pretty much out of sight. I mean, that would be my recommendation if they have to put one in. That that's all, Vincent.
Alright, thank you. Um, I don't have any other questions except one. Uh, Mr. Remer, I we in your presentation, you mentioned about CUPs. If they feed the C uh certain requirements, then they need to stick a CUP. Currently, what is the um expense and time uh required for a CUP?
Uh, in terms of time, typically, um, our conditional use permits take two to three months to get approved. Uh, in terms of cost, it's a I think it's around two thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. That's all. Uh, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. Uh, Madam Club, are there any email public comments?
Please, there are no email public comments.
And uh, could you please unmute the phone to see if any, do we have any callers want to speak on this item?
We have one caller and we have unmuted the audio.
Paula, do you want to speak on this item? Hearing none. Outpost public hearing. Uh, time for final council questions or comments. Time with Councilmember Chavez.
Well, thank you. Uh, you know, I don't want to speak for the rest of my colleagues here, but based on what I've heard tonight, it appears that most of the focus uh has been on this uh issue regarding indoor recycling. Um, you know, it it was mentioned earlier, this H mark that's up there and uh again, I apologize, I didn't, I'm I know the store, I just never realized what the name of it was, but I know that they have a big recycling center up there and I know people that have used it and have commented that it's run very well, just kept very clean. So uh, you can have outdoor recycling places uh that are not unsightly and not um, not unkempt, but uh um, it appears that we have chosen to overcome that complaint by having them move indoors. I'm not sure that that is the complete answer for especially a California store. I can understand back east or even up in Oregon because of the weather they have, why that might be more uh that might be better uh than perhaps in California. Um, and I'll tell you what, I I'm not a grocer, but as a business person, I'm not sure that I would even want an indoor space dedicated to um recycling inside my store. Um, I I to me, that would be a a hindrance to attracting uh people who are there to shop for food and other items. Um, even given the photos that were shown to us tonight, uh uh, those look like pretty staged photos. I'm not sure if that's uh how it would actually turn out as far as who's using them and how they're being used. Um, you know, this uh this so-called California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act to me is another typical uh state legislation that lacks common sense and uh is is so long that nobody even understands what it says. Uh, that seems to be the 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 hey, it's been described tonight. Uh, anything that has that long of a title usually uh uh ends up that way, at least as far as I can see where the laws are concerned. But at any rate, uh, it appears that we don't at this point even know how that's going to be applied. Um, so I again, I just, uh, you know, the the rest of the report, I understand it it sounds like it makes a lot of sense and things that would work here in in Temple City and and again, that's that's always been my focus is, you know, I could care less what works uh in Oregon or somewhere else. Uh, my question is, does it work in Temple City? And uh, other than this indoor recycling, uh, I think everything else uh would 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 do well as far as uh what we want to see from from grocers in Temple City. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Mint, any final questions or comments?
Yeah, I think I've I've said my piece for the the question part, but um I I guess in in general, um it just seems like we don't have too big of a understanding of how we can like your cycling centers in general. Um, and it seems to me that part of that is just simply the way the state follows is not a lot of transparency behind that. But a lot of it just seems like, you know, whether it's the existing cycling center at Ralphs or or a future one, that's going to be at some location in the city. I I'm more, I I really want to know what regulatory tools do we have to to keep that under control? At least within the the expectations of of what we would want for a recycling center to be operating in our city. It just seems like we don't, there's not a lot of teeth to at least exist any places. What can we learn from the lessons from the existing places and apply that to the future? And and yet, to Councilmember Chavez's point, um, part of me does agree maybe moving it indoors is is kind of like a very blunt tool to overcome that. I wonder if there's a more more um elegant way to 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 handle that. Granted, I don't know if you if we allowed it to be outdoors, are we going to basically repeat what we have at Ralphs? Is there something additional we could do to that? And and hence why um kind of segue into my previous comment about the kiosk is, well, if we have an existing issue related to kiosks, would if we simply disallowed it, would we into some trouble? With that, with the recycling center, we're, like you mentioned, we're required to to allow it by uh if if the state determines that it needs to be, so we don't have control of that. But if we have control over the kiosks, I mean, maybe that's you know, at least one step, one thing we can do. That's all. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Viscar, can you find a comment?
No, I don't think I have anymore. I think everything's been pretty well said. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Tim Sternquist?
Uh, I'm just curious, since there doesn't seem to be, you know, the perfect answer about indoors, outdoors, how my council members feel about having it if we need to have one in the outside bay. Because I haven't heard anything either way, so I'm wondering what would be concerns about that? If any.
Um, i- i- if I could attempt to at least uh express my 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 feeling, but I I think that's a good idea. Um, Mayor Pretend, but but I think we're talking about general uh uh ordinance here. I mean, if it applies to the Kmart side, yeah, I would agree with uh your suggestion, but speaking in general, though.
I keep forgetting that it's not I keep forgetting that it's not specific to
Yeah.
that the Kmart site, and I would imagine you don't want to have something separate for one site and then different for some another. So, thank you, because that really clarifies in my mind and I keep I'm writing myself a note right now that it's not specific to the Kmart site, and I've read it like five different times, and I don't know why that's just embedded in my mind, I think, because we keep talking about the Kmart site. But thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um, I don't particularly have any more questions or comments, but seems to me like a lot of uh discussions tonight centers on the indoor uh recycling centers, so I really more of a question for uh Mrs. City Manager and uh uh Mrs. City Attorney and also Mr. Reamer is uh how we're gonna proceed from here? Seems like there's a lot of questions on the indoor. Is that something we should uh further discuss? Before we look for passing of the ordinance?
Uh, Mr. Cook, why don't you go first and I'll follow you?
Sure, um, if there is consensus on other, the other issues, I think we could segregate that component out. I think one of the issues we have is the moratorium, but this is separate from the moratorium and in the sense of the uh prior ordinances that you talked about. So while there is an urgency to deal with this, um, if I think it would be helpful because of the by right abilities that are embedded that you you if you wish to segregate that component out and just we can just deal with it from a state law standpoint, I think that would suffice for tonight.
I was going to say the same, that uh a motion to approve the ordinance with the elimination of subsection G in the operative language uh would suffice. Um, this is something that's been considered by the planning commission, so it does not need to go back to them. You're simply taking their recommendation and moving off of it a little bit, so legally you're in perfectly fine shape to have the first reading tonight. Move forward, have the second reading in June and thereby um have this be in effect before the moratorium expires, uh which I know is is important uh to the the specific plan area. And and that would allow the controversial or the most controversial item to be set aside, put out of the ordinance, and we can revisit that at a later date. But once we see how the ordinance a- as it would exist uh does in in attracting businesses.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just uh change the wording in paragraph G from must to may? And maybe add some language that, you know, recycling facilities uh or the the laws of the state of California must be taken into account some somehow, so because obviously, we're still, the law is still the law and and we're as as a as a city where if a new grocer comes in there, it may trigger the that law, and then again, my go back to my original question, who's responsible for putting in a recycling? Is it the grocer or is it the city? And and as I said before, outdoor recycling can work, but it apparently for some reason in our city, actually, it's just one location, it doesn't work, and and that's our fault. That's because we've let it not work, and there's got to be something that we can do to clean that up and 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 Fernando, I know that you remember this years ago, this has been a question for a long, long time, and yet it still is apparently. And and it's time for us to do something about that, and uh I I I'm all for recycling. I I I'm not against recycling. I just don't know that that we necessarily want to put in the language, you know, must be indoors, because I don't know that, I think to me, that would be a deterrence to attracting uh a grocer uh rather than a than an asset, so. But I I'm okay if 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 the if the majority wants to just delete that for now and then revisit, but I think it's a bigger issue. I rather than just simply uh in this this particular situation, but recycling in general and how we're going to um deal with these issues down the road.
Tom? Tom, I I can't recall, but what is the main issue why we can't clean up Ralph's? I mean, I I have forgotten, to be honest with you.
Well, I I don't know if it's a question of cleaning up. I think it's a question of maybe monitoring it and for some reason, we've gone to them and we've and they have cleaned it up to a certain extent, and I don't want to just pick on them, but uh but sometimes, uh I guess, I don't know if it's a uh enforcement issue or what, but it does get out of hand there at times and and uh I I don't know. I that I'd have to rely on Mr. Cook and his uh his enforcement staff to tell us what the issues. I keep hearing that there's complaints, but I don't know what the complaints are at this point.
I I believe one of problems and incorrect, if I'm wrong, Mr. Cook and Mr. Reamer, uh I thought one of the issues that we have with it with enforcement was that there was, it was there before with any kind of CUP, any kind of um uh regulation that that permit that use, so it was before any of that, so they they really don't have any uh a any laws to govern them, so it's big, I mean, there are some, but but they're not not any specific laws or CUP that we can throw at it. Uh, for example, you cannot eliminate it uh because required by the state, but yeah, at the same time, they use it. They use itself, it's not regulated by any kind of uh or or ordinance.
Or conditions of approval that are a little can really govern a stricter uh enforcement or regulatory um actions of the operations.
And there's nothing that the state can do to help cities who have problematic.
We I I think we're getting a little off, I'd be, I I'm gonna go to break, but we we can look at that issue.
No, that that this is, yeah, we're we're getting to the point, I was I was going to jump in uh as the mayor had had asked for for some insight. I was gonna say, this is something I'm happy to send you, uh send the five members of the council a memo on. I'll work with Mr. Reimers on it. Um, on our existing sites, the issues that we have at our our two existing sites and issues that that uh we may try to avoid in the future. Um, currently, recycling facilities do require a conditional use permit, so if we do not include um uh if we don't include the recycling facility language for the grocery stores, uh which is my my recommendation now is to simply take that out and we'll deal with the recycling facilities separately. Uh, any recycling facility would have to come through and get a conditional use permit on its own. Um, that would follow along within 60 days of a grocery store opening, so it would be something we would be likely to see while the grocery store was under construction. Um, and and we would deal with that separately while we consider the recycling facility issue more globally. Um, so that that would be my recommendation now, but I'll obviously uh take whatever uh direction you give and whatever uh motion you would like to make.
Uh, Mayor Yu, I think I can propose a motion.
Yeah, please.
Uh, I would propose a motion that uh we introduce ordinance number 21 dash 1055 for first reading only by title only, amending Article 9.1 T, special uses of the zoning code relating to grocery stores as presented with the exception of item G, which will be deleted. Um, and that we waive further reading of ordinance number 21 dash 1055 and schedule the second reading for, I'm sorry, Scott, when was that, June 4th, I think you said? June 1st of 2021. Thank you. Greg, is that is that okay as far as the?
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that.
All right. I'll second.
Okay, it's move and second it. Uh, roll call, please. Madam Clark?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Man?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu.
Yes, thank you. Um, and Madam Clark, would you please uh read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mayor, sorry. Ordinance number 21 dash 1055, an ordinance of City Council of City of Temple City, California, amending Title 9 of the Temple City Code to add section 9 dash 1T dash 19 pertaining to grocery store performance standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Um, we're moving on to the next item, new business. There is none, and update from Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Yu, members of the council. First, I'd like to apologize to anybody who was watching on YouTube at the first part of this meeting. We did have some buffering issues, but thank you to Amir and Red88 for addressing those during the course of the meeting. So the complete meeting should be, if you missed the first part, the recording should be there. Um, so apologize for the uh delay and the buffering that happened at the beginning of the meeting. If I may, Mayor Yu and members of the council, uh there was a question during public comment regarding Athens um and some clarifying points that if if it's okay for me to make.
Um. Yeah.
The the uh there was uh, it was noted that rates went up nearly 100%. Um, the the rate adjustment that actually went up was in the following context. One, we moved to a three bin recycling system as required by state law to take care of regular waste, recycling, and green waste and organics. That um that did uh include a retroactive adjustment of 3.65% to residential rates starting January 1st. Then this July 1st, there will be a CPI adjustment as well that will be coming to you at your next council meeting. Commercial rates did go up as well, but the commercial rates also went up by 20 and 20 20% for commercial and 26 for multifamily, also with a CPI adjustment, so it was not 100% increase. But also as well is that the notion that you're getting less service. Uh, residents still are allowed to do weekly uh unlimited bulky item pickup, so that 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 uh service stays in place. And also too, it because you're still generating the same amount of trash that you're doing twice a week, you're just putting it in a single barrel once a week. Um, we do have the standard 64 gallons, this is true, but on average, that's kind of what we used as as the standard that we would roll out to the residents at no cost for the charge of those uh of those containers. So um, we're we're, most people are generating the same amount of trash and rather if we're picking it up once a week or twice a week. So many of the ma- many of the um uh services are remaining the same, obviously, with the three bin system and allowing people to dispose of the same amount of trash. Now, the other question was, what were higher or lower than other rates? As we stated back in uh February, when you considered the third amendment to the franchise agreement, we were prior to this latest uh amendment and this new service, our rates were about in the middle. It was not the highest and it was not the lowest, but it was and it remains to be in the middle still today. We'll do another rate survey soon, but I anticipate it can, I don't anticipate it being the highest, nor do I anticipate it being the lowest, so right we're right about in the middle of 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 rate structures throughout the San Gabriel Valley. I think that covers all of those items. There will be some, um, if there's any other questions of me um on the uh rate issue, I'm happy to take any questions. Myself and Ashley Avery have been working with many uh residences and commercial entities throughout the last couple of months, uh just answering questions. We're always here, uh 626-285-2171, extension 4105 goes right here, so um, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have about your rates. We're dealing with some folks right now um who are transitioning through. Lastly, there will be some filming activity that'll be taking place along near Las Tunas and Sunita uh this this uh Thursday night, Thursday night and Friday night as well. So if you see some lot of uh movie trucks out, there's gonna be some filming activity in and around town. That's it for uh, that's it for me tonight, Mayor Yu. Thank you so much.
Brian, can I ask you?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hello? Brian?
Yes, sir.
Are are we getting paid by the 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 uh movie company?
We are, are we, they, we can only charge for our services or the sheriff's services. Um, there is a flat uh film permit fee that we we collect. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what it is, but there's no uh, there's no other fee other than the direct services that we provide to re- to reimburse us for those direct services.
It might not hurt us to take a look at that sometime.
I I will be bringing, uh, Mr. Azubi and I will be, we'll we'll be bringing back uh some for the council's consideration, some uh revisions to the film permitting ordinance.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Mr. Murphy, uh, City Attorney, any update?
Uh, no, no update this evening, sir. Um, we, so much of the law that we're looking at right now, we're waiting for legislation to actually be adopted and to see what the governor's thinking, and the governor is spending a lot of time on his June 15th uh state reopening, so uh not out of the world of law uh this week. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Um, next is council report regarding ad hoc standing committee meetings. Councilmember Men, do you want to report out on the ad hoc that um on the Primrose? Uh, the standing?
Yes. Sure, Mayor Yu. Yeah, so the ad hoc, uh, sorry, I'm I'm turning off my camera just because it lags my every time I talk. Uh, but the ad hoc did meet uh with with staff regarding the um the Primrose Park. Uh, specifically, uh, color scheme uh for the playground area was discussed. In in summary, the the color palette that was presented to us um was still a little bit monochromatic in the opinion, and we, based on the last discussion with full council, we directed staff to come back with some uh more options uh that we're not really looking at, you know, a bunch of red. So, sat with our consultant to evaluate uh options. We we did provide some direction uh to evaluate the colors that we could bring back and perhaps uh Mayor Yu, with your architect background, you can maybe elaborate that a bit more elegantly than than I have just just done, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I I everything that the councilman said is uh correct. Um, what we did, we took the um discussion by the council and took it back and and make sure that some of the comments that made by the full council is um uh considered in the in the color scheme, so.
Vince, can I ask you a question?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Viscara?
Um, I I received a suggestion from one of our residents that we consider uh reintroducing or putting back the famous rocket ship that used to be at Live Oak, you know, that the kids played on, if there might not be some sentimental value and use for it. Do we want to look at that? What do you think?
I think the JPI may have a problem with putting that back up.
Well, I understand, but but maybe we don't necessarily have to use it to be used by little kids more more of a visual than anything else. I don't know, it's just a thought.
Yeah, I I think it's I think it's a good thought, but uh the liability issues would have to be addressed first, I think.
I think um um the plan really, at this point, doesn't really have any room for it. Um, I wish we could have considered that uh way back, oh, oh, further back when we designed it. So we're already now in uh construction, actually, so
Right.
any change is gonna be a change order. And uh, secondly, I don't even know if that rocket ship, uh, I think it might be in the city yard, but I don't know what state it is it.
I'm pretty sure it's there. I don't either. I don't know it's, what kind of shape it's in.
Yeah.
Mayor Yu, this is, uh, Parks and Recreation Director Matsumoto. I can provide just a brief, uh, comment on the current status of the rocket.
Yeah.
Sure, uh, it is, uh, still stored at the city yard right now, and unfortunately, it's not in, um, eh, in any condition to be placed even as a, um, I guess, a decorative piece, um, at the park. Um, it is something, though, that we have received various comments on the nostalgia factor of the rocket at, uh, Rocket Playground Equipment at Live Oak Park. So moving forward, any type of playground, uh, design at Live Oak Park, um, one of the first things that we'll do is, is try to have a rocket-inspired playground theme. Um, you know, if and when we do, um, or not if, of when we, uh, move forward with doing a replacement of the playground equipment at Live Oak Park. So it is something we are aware of, uh, we are, uh, do acknowledge how, um, important it was, uh, for many generations growing up in Temple City, and will, um, you know, have that as a design um, feature, uh, when we do, uh, have a replacement at Live Oak Park.
All right, thank you. Um, any other council report? On meeting? So hearing none, I, I'll move on to council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda, uh, starting with Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Yu. Um, I don't know if it's just this evening, but it seems like our transmission has gotten worse than better. Uh, we've been doing this now for over a year, and I don't know if it's the format that we're using or what, but, uh, for whatever reason, we've chosen the go-to meeting site. I don't know that I use this for any other meeting besides our council meetings. Everyone else that I know of uses Zoom or some other source, and it, it doesn't appear that we have as many problems with those media outlets. So, um, I, I know that, uh, I've talked to Brian about this in the past, and I know that they're working on it to get us back into the chamber council, uh, as soon as possible, and of course, a safe, uh, situation. But, uh, yeah, this, uh, this, this format just isn't cutting it. I, I, it seems like it's, it's getting worse and worse, uh. And I don't know that there's anybody to blame, other than the fact that, uh, maybe the people that are doing it out there, there's just so many people online, maybe that's the problem, we don't know. But, and, and, and also the engagement, I mean, I mean, we don't get any engagement from our community at all, and I think a lot of it has to do with the difficulty of people trying to get on, and I've heard that many times from, from people in the, in the city that they just give up because it's just too hard to, to either listen or hear anything, or even to get on to begin with. So, I mean, just, you know, food for thought, I guess, as we move forward. Um, I, I get lost with my time, but I think I didn't report out on the fact that the JPIA did have a had a, had a virtual conference, I believe it was not last week, the week before last, I believe it was after we had our last meeting. But the conference was basically intended, I think most of you, uh, remember attending the JPIA New Council Members Academy. Uh, I think most of us went to that. This, uh, conference or this academy was meant as a, a refresher course for those who have been on the council for a number of years and may have forgotten some of the things that, uh, we learned regarding risk management and just basically ethics and, and, and different topics that were discussed at that initial academy. And so it went off very well. Um, I did take some notes and, uh, and I would mind sharing them with, with, with anyone else. Uh, I'll have to check and see if that's going to be available. At least the, the, the materials of those will be available to all the members if anybody wants to take a look at it. And then lastly, uh, I just want to, uh, let you know that I'm a, a proud father, uh, not that anybody was born, but, uh, my, uh, oldest son just passed the bar exam. So, uh, we're very happy, uh, and relieved that, uh, he will now have a full-time job, hopefully, and, uh, and, uh, I, I tried to talk him out of being a lawyer, but he didn't listen to me, so, uh.
Is he gonna come work with you, uh, Tom?
I don't see any Chavez and Chavez in the near future, but we'll see. Uh, I told him to get a, a real, a real job that pays him and has, he has health insurance. So, uh, but no, he's doing well. He's already working for a firm, and he has been working for them for quite a while now, and, uh, so obviously, it's a, a big, uh, big thing off his shoulders, so. And that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, and congratulations. Councilmember Men, any, uh, items from you?
Yeah, just, just briefly, uh, first, first of all, congratulations, Tom. That's a, that's a great milestone, uh, and a proud achievement. Um, I, I don't have much, but I, I, I do want to give a shout out to, um, the recent vaccine pop-up clinic at, at Live Oak Park. Um, I, I drove by just to take a gander, and, uh, it looked pretty busy and then also pretty well, well-run. Uh, kind of similar to some of the previous clinics we've had. So it's a great, great job by everyone who was involved. Um, and, and on that note, I, I just, you know, now, now that we, we have a larger percentage of the population vaccinated, um, I just still want to urge everyone to stay vigilant, because, um, you know, it's, it seems like sometimes we, we relax a little bit too much when we're not totally in, in the clear. Um, just case in point, um, I have family in Taiwan, which many of you do know, and they're experiencing one of the sharpest spikes, uh, in, in Taiwan recently. Um, it's, it's, it's actually pretty severe, and this is coming and I have a mission that has kept it under control for the most part, uh, since the beginning of pandemic. So it just, to me, it's kind of like a warning sign that, hey, you, you might think you got everything under control, but you know, you, you can't let it slip. You gotta keep taking the same precautions that, that you've had, because something like this just easily go away. But on that note, I, I've been, uh, many times now with my kids, and, um, I always see our residents and everyone who are patrons of our parks, uh, following those rules and very courteous and safe, and, and I, I'm, I'm really proud of, uh, our city and our residents. Um, and, and then also just a quick shout out parks, folks who, uh, keep our parks in such a great shape this way now that, um, so families are starting to venture out, um, with they've been vaccinated. So, um, hopefully, it's just a matter, I'm, as, yeah, more of the children vaccinated has a domino effect on everything from, from school reopenings and so on, so forth. And thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Viscar, any items that you want to bring up?
Tom, does this mean you got a raise?
Raise for what?
Well, now that you've got a kid out of the house and off on his own.
Oh, no. He, he's been out of the house for quite a while.
Okay. Okay, I have, I have, uh, one other issue, um, and need some guidance. The Alpha Beta Site feels like we're going no place, nothing's happening, nobody's addressing it, and everybody's kind of fatalistic about it. I, is there anything we can do to start addressing that? Or do you want to bring it back, or how, how would you want to handle that?
We can bring that back for discussion.
Greg was in the process of bringing some information back to us.
Which is what's gonna happen, Greg? We can bring back a discussion on, on the Alpha Beta Site. I, I know that, uh, Councilmember Sternquist asked me to look at, at some aspects of that and, and the potential use of, of eminent domain. Um, I can put together, uh, an email to you all on that, but eh, in, maybe a general discussion, um, of what the city's authority is and, and what some of our limitations are might be a good idea as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, all right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protam Sternquist?
A few things. Greg, before, um, we go further with that, in just general discussion, do I need to recuse myself from those discussions as well?
I believe so, due to, uh, the proximity to, um, your, uh, multifamily property that you own, uh, to the rear of it, yes.
Okay, so I, I guess when, when you do that, if you would just remind me that I need to, I should remember that. Okay, thank you. Um, I, I think a, a couple of you might have known that Judy Chu called me a couple of weeks ago to share that she was being an advocate for us in Washington regarding the ask that we, um, had requested, uh, and staff did such a great job at kind of the last minute sending that in regarding our repavement of our streets, and uh, she just basically wanted to let the council know that she was doing everything she could, um, in DC. And tomorrow is the American Transportation Association, um, legislative meetings. It's over a period of three days. And tomorrow, Judy, um, Congress, uh, member Young Kim and Judy Chu, they will be participating. It's called a fly-in, a virtual fly-in to DC, and they will be discussing transportation funding. And, um, I can send the information to Brian. It's a Zoom link, but if any of you would like to participate or even just listen in, um, you're welcome to do so. Um, on Fri-
I find that interesting that they two would be working together since one's a Republican and one's a Democrat. I wonder how that's gonna turn out.
Yeah, I don't know if they're actually working together, but they're both participating in the virtual meeting. So it'll be interesting to see what comes of that, Tom.
Yeah.
Um, but definitely, there is an opportunity for people to, to call in, or even you can type in something to the Congress members, just saying, you know, please support this or that. So that is an opportunity for us. I will definitely be on and um, thank her again for being an advocate for us. On Friday, at the Foothill Transit Meeting, Supervisor Barker is going to be on early at seven forty-five. And this is an opportunity, if any of you would like to, to listen in on that meeting, and I can send that Zoom link to, um, Brian also. And she will be discussing what her vision and goals are for not just transportation in Los Angeles County, but specifically in the San Gabriel Valley. So if there's any ideas, anything, um, besides get rid of congestion that you can think of, or even just want to participate, that's an opportunity on Friday. Um, let's see. Um, another thing, and Greg, you can help me with this, but there is been a lot of, um, push from our colleagues in the San Gabriel Valley to really oppose SB nine and SB ten. And, um, Greg, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a little bit reminder of what SB nine is and SB ten, and see if the council would actually like to send a letter of opposition to, um, the Senate.
Sure, so as, as I recall SB nine, um, it kind of takes, uh, the whole ADU law issue and, and pushes it forward um, by saying that any, uh, eh, eh, essentially, a duplex is, would be allowed within a single-family residential zone uh, without any discretionary review. So the, the kind of development that most cities like Temple City leave to their, uh, R-two zone would be allowed in the R-one zone, um, as I say, with, without any, any discretionary permit, they'd be allowed by right, that the same way that a um, a, a single-family home is. Um, SB ten, uh, let me see, I'm pulling that one up right now because I haven't looked at that in a while. Um, SB ten deals with transit-rich areas, which were considered, even though we don't have major transit stops, Las Tunas and Rosemead both tend to be considered major transit corridors, and it allows for, uh, certain amounts of upzoning. If the council would like, I can give a full report on SB nine and ten, uh, at next meeting, so that you all know where we are on them. And if you want to join the San Gab- other San Gabriel Valley cities, we can work something up. Uh, so Councilmember Sternquist, I'll put both of those on my agenda for next time.
Okay, thank you. And, and I just think it's important because I don't want to speak on behalf of the council, and COG is definitely going to start gathering opposition letters. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we were as informed as we possibly could be, and, and I forget, actually, the difference between the Weiner bill and, I don't even, I can't recall the name of the other other one, but I, I know a lot of it will eliminate our, our one zones altogether. So if, if we could do that, and then we could decide whether or not we'd like to take a position, that would be great. And I think, um, pretty much that's it. Congratulations to your son, Tom. Vincent, you're on mute. Vincent? Here you go.
Yeah, I'm back, I'm back, I'm back. Um, so, um, thank you for, uh, Mayor Tim Sternquist, uh, bringing in SB nine and SB ten. So in addition to that, I also want to act on what Councilmember Men said, uh, regarding the vaccination. It's actually a great event. And thank you so much, uh, for Mr. Cook and his staff for making it happen. So, um, with that, I will move on to the next item, which is additional public comments and items not listed. Uh, Madam Clark, do we have any callers and do we have any email comments?
Mayor Yu, there are no callers, but I do have one email public comments.
Uh, could you please read it?
Thank you. This email comes from Carrie Chan. I understand that the trash service will be upgraded to recycle program in July first, and the price of trash service will maintain the same or higher. I checked around the trash service fees charged by Athens Services in surrounding area, such as San Gabriel and Monrovia, and they are paying lower than us. My question is why the trash service fee is the same or higher while the service cut into half, but twice the price? Also, if Athens Services is charging lower to other cities, why are city residents are paying more? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think some of that has already imparted the answer by Mr. Cook in his, uh, private comment. Uh, any other comments other than that? Okay, uh, hearing none, I will close the public comments. So we are adjourned for the night. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.